Budget and tax rates, so. Okay, the first item on our agenda, please note, everyone's here except Ms. Elise, who's absent this evening. First thing on our agenda, items from council. Anybody have anything in particular? Citizens Communication is next, so if there's anything at all anyone would like to speak about, now would be the time to come forward and just try to limit your comments to five minutes and name an address for the record. So, the mic is open. Anyone would like to come forward at this time, now would be the time, under Citizens Communication. Okay. No one coming forward, I'm gonna close Citizens Communication and then we'll move into ordinances. We do have two public hearings only and then a third item, which of course is our first voter on our budget, so we'll do the public hearings first.
C1 is a public hearing, the first public hearing, on the 2016-2017 City of Victoria tax rate.
Anyone that'd like to come forward and speak about the tax rate specifically, now would be the time. Tonight is just a public hearing, then we'll have public hearings and votes in later meetings. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on the tax rate and leave C2.
C2 is the first public hearing on the City of Victoria budget for fiscal year 2016-2017.
Anyone would like to come forward to discuss the budget, now would be the time? Good, we got somebody. So, again, just name an address, Mark.
My name is Mark Lofgren, I live at 116 Willshire Drive, Victoria, Texas. I want to talk about the tone and the direction of the budget. And there's two items that really bother me in the budget. One is, at the August 2nd meeting, you discussed some cuts because money's tight, and one of them was $267,000 cut from the Seal Code program. And it was addressed at that meeting that if a project came in under budget, that then they would fund it. I think it should be funded and some other things should be taken out, and if the money comes in, those things should be funded. You set the tone with the budget and the direction for staff. If you care about the streets, fund it. If they don't spend their money, then you can use it for the other one-term items, but you set the tone. If the money, if those projects don't come in, then you're cutting it out of the Seal Code program and you're going back to what city councils did before. When they, budget got tight, they cut money out of streets. Don't be like other city councils. You develop the street plan, you know, live by it. The second item is in the CIP. You're spending $7.4 million to build Placido Benavides. It may need to be built. I don't think now's the time. I think there's other streets that need to be, that that money, the sales tax corporation money could be used for. Crestwood's a prime example. The other thing is, I don't know if you have, you're gonna have as much money in the sales tax corporation. If you had to cut from the city because of sales tax, maybe you need to cut and do some of Crestwood. And Crestwood isn't the only one, I'm just putting Crestwood out there because it's rated 58. You set the tone. Do you care about the streets? I understand money's tight, but if, cut it from, you have $6 million of other one-term, one-time items. Cut it from now's. If you come, if you come under budget, then fund some of those items. You set the tone. Is the tone gonna be that you support the street program? Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open on the budget. If anyone else would like to come forward and speak? An address for the record and keep your comments to five minutes.
Will do. Ricardo Soto, I'll use that 306 South Bridge. Good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and Members of City Council. On behalf of the Victoria Police Officers Association, we would first like to thank you for your time tonight. With the understanding that our presence upset a few, last address to the City Council, and without engaging in simplified semantics, it is the fact that the city's safety and security should be first, priority. Without it, all of their services and programs will not certainly, will most certainly suffer, excuse me. Better road conditions and increased programs are worthless if people cannot safely operate on the roadways or safely participate in these programs. In last year's budget, we addressed the devaluing of supervisor tenure by creating a pay scale in which a two-year sergeant, lieutenant, and captain would make the same wage as a 20-year employee occupying the same rank. We addressed a dire situation in which tenured employees were leaving as their experience was devalued by across-the-board raises and a pay plan that did not value tenure or knowledge. We addressed the fact that national sentiment towards officers was shifting and that recruitment would most certainly either slow or the quality of officer would decrease. These concerns were met with bringing all supervisors to the same pay level, hiring new employees instead of valuing tenured officers, and an unequal pay adjustment plan that focused on new employees instead of tenured employees. The Victoria Police Department has recently lost five of those employees who had seven or more years of experience, two of which had over 10 years of experience. What that means in police department has lost approximately 55 years of experience in the manner of several weeks. Economically, this is bad business and deemed in most corporate circles as a failure. In most business, this would result in loss of revenue. In this context, it means decreased services for the citizens and increased taxes. We are not privy to content of exit interviews by exiting employees. However, we do understand that the Human Resources Department takes a genuine interest in improving the city. We do believe that perhaps the context of these interviews is being misplaced. Make no mistake that the root of all issues facing first responders resolves around monetary compensation. Claims of inadequate leadership and poor equipment are financially motivated and rooted. People will continue their employment despite the conditions if they are compensated appropriately. Compensatory wages increase employee retention. Increased retention creates large pools of qualified employees to fill supervisory ranks. Decreased need for new hires increases available funds for training and equipment. All of this comes with a reduced financial burden on the citizens and increased funds for other matters of importance to them. We would also like to address the civilian employees of the department. The records clerks, investigations clerks, telecommunications operators, and the crime scene technicians have been grossly underpaid for many years as well. The day-to-day operations would be drastically affected should we lose any of them to agencies of higher pay. This is not hard to imagine, given the fact that other local agencies pay several dollars more an hour to, for similar positions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Officer Soto. Public hearing regarding the budget is still open, if anyone would come forward.
Good evening. My name's Ray Wilkinson. I'm a field representative with the Texas Municipal Police Association. We represent most of the officers that work for the Victoria Police Department. We also cover about 24,300 officers across the state of Texas. I'm here to support the association in the request for increased funding for their pay and benefits. As a field rep, I'm actually based in this area, and I have ties to Victoria. I spend a lot of my money in Victoria, and I believe safety should be a paramount concern for all the citizens of Victoria. And losing qualified officers always creates a problem. And because I represent 41 counties that I travel, I've come in contact with many former Victoria police officers that have gone to work at other agencies. And many of them tell me the reason they left is because they didn't feel like they were getting compensated for the work that they were doing. Also, as part of my job, I travel around and visit academies. I visit about 13 academies twice, at least twice a year between Corpus and the Houston area. And I've talked to many of the training coordinators, and they have informed me that it's harder to recruit qualified peace officers into the law enforcement career. Many of them's family do not want them getting into law enforcement, and if there was any department in any city or county, you certainly need qualified applicants or retain qualified police officers, probably now more than at any time. It's not just reading and writing, but they have to be able to understand technology and deal with people on a regular basis. And as you know, probably many of the complaints come from contacts with the citizens, and so having interpersonal skills and having a huge pool to draw from increases the opportunity to have qualified police officers. And I think as the pay, if the pay does not meet the market value, Victoria is gonna continue to lose qualified police officers. And that's gonna cause problems in the court system because you don't have experienced officers to handle CIT or criminal investigations, crime scene searches, and things like that. So, you cannot bank on being able to replace the 55 years' experience just by going through the academies. And I will say this, Victoria is known for producing high-quality applicants, and that's why they're coveted, and usually when they leave this area, they're able to find jobs at higher-paying departments with very little trouble because the departments know that they've experienced just about any kind of investigation out there, and they were provided with high-quality training. So, I guess just in, in kinda closing, keep that in mind when you're looking at the budget. I know every department has important employees, but very few deal with the issues that police officers and the liability that's involved behind it. I kinda hope that Victoria won't take the view that they're more like a AAA farm club, that we're gonna train them, and when they just get really to where they're productive officers, we're gonna let them go down the road and spend more money training and maybe have a harder time replacing that group of officers that are leaving. And I guess one other thing, two other points I'd like to make real quick is that Victoria, I've been in, like I said, connected to this area for 30 years, and the oil boom has come and gone. And I think it would have been responsible to maybe think about putting aside money for not just employees for the, for the police department and first responders, but for the rest of the city employees, instead of maybe looking at too many projects at one time when things are good, and then we lose quality people. Those people may not come back whenever the bust is over, which we all know it eventually will be. In closing, I happen to be in Dallas. My team was involved in responding to the hospitals when the officers were murdered up in Dallas, and I can tell you, it was a very sober experience, and that can happen anywhere. And I'd hope that, that the council would support the officers' requests for pay and benefits so that they can remain competitive and stay in this community and protect the people of Victoria rather than going down the road to some other community. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Anyone else would like to comment about the budget? Seeing no one jump up, we'll close the public hearing on item C2, the budget, and then we'll move to C3.
Item C3 is an ordinance approving and adopting a budget for operating the municipal government of the City of Victoria for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2016, and ending on September 30, 2017. Appropriating money for the various funds and purposes of such budget, including appropriations of money to pay interest and principal sinking fund requirements on all indebtedness, repealing all conflicting ordinances and appropriations, providing for savings, and declaring an effective date.
May I move, we adopt C3? Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and second. This is just our first reading of the budget. Discussion?
Yeah, for clarification, the question Councilman Bocknight was asking is whether we would have a separate public hearing on this ordinance because it is the first reading of an ordinance. We have it posted separately as item C2 and C3 because we separately call those public hearings for budget purposes, but we have already done the public hearing on this particular ordinance.
I guess Gilbert, Gilbert wants to talk about the budget. He's just ready to answer questions?
I'm ready, I mean.
I have a couple, but I mean, I didn't know.
I'm here to ask questions, but I was gonna maybe answer some of the questions. I had a question earlier, especially Mark, and I recall stating that, you know, we can use CO money, especially on the $267,000. And as a CPA, I always qualify when there's a time gap when I talk about, but if I need to stand up today, I'm very certain that we have the money in the bond side to cover that street reduction that he was talking about, $267,000 that we proposed to reduce. And back in, whenever I came up here and asked for the changes on August 2nd, yes. There was a cut of 267 on the street overlay. At that time, I said, there's money available in the bonds, and I'm always qualifying, pretty sure it's gonna be available, but I can tell you today that it's available. So, I'm confident we're not cutting back on that street.
That's good news, thank you.
The second part he talked about on the sales tax development corporation. Sales tax corporation does have the funding. Aside of which project y'all wanna do, Crestwood, whatever, the funding is there to take care of that, I'm pretty confident is that. Other than that, no other questions or comments.
Counsel, do you wanna, anybody?
Quickly, so the money for Placido Benavides, is there, been budgeted, right?
Yes.
Will be budgeted for the 2017, and the plan is to take the budget for sales tax on the, in their September meeting, the last Monday of September, so. But it, Gilbert is confident it's there.
And that was my question, lead to, and maybe using, delaying that project for now and looking at other needs. It, Crestwood is a perfect example of that.
So, when the budget goes to the sales tax corporation, they'll discuss those, and then whatever decision they make, it comes to council for approval.
But you will have another CIP soon, I think.
We're planning on doing a, a big CIP again, will not come until February, so we'll see what some of the proceeds from sales that we have that go into the reserves and what projects are coming in under, and some of the projects that we're proposing that are postponed right now, if there's funding there, then we'll bring those back up, so.
Thank you.
I think it's a true statement that, you know, no project is being removed. It's a matter of postponing to match the timeliness of the revenue. And Gilbert, what, just for the whole budget year, what percent decline did you budget in sales tax?
Of, which year?
For this upcoming, for our new budget, how much of a decline did you budget over last year? Was it 4%?
22, 22, 23%?
Excuse me?
$2 million, close to 2 million.
Oh, dollars-wise?
Well, he's asking percent.
Actually, the percent, I'm sorry, yeah.
It translated about, over, slightly $2 million, close to $2 million.
And what was that percent? I'm sorry.
20.
20%?
Went from 18.
21, 22%.
Eight, 18 to 16 million, okay. Of course, with sales tax.
So, let me throw the numbers at you. I went from an 18 to 16 million dollars.
Okay, yeah.
Basically.
Quite a, quite a decline, and sales tax is certainly more volatile, you know, which is, makes this so difficult. And we, and I just, as I said many times, we collect more in sales tax than property tax. People focus on property tax, and you guys know that.
Let me, let me correct.
Too much focus, just a minute, there's too much focus on property tax. But it's difficult when you have a much higher volatile amount of money like this, and that, you know, so I, I have to reinforce that with the public constantly, I'm sorry.
No, my apologies. My correction, when I say 22, 23%, that's on a monthly basis, did you decrease? But if you look at it as an overall, 9% to 10%, that's what you're looking at, close to 11%.
9% or 10%?
It's not 22.
Yeah.
I was, I was answering your question on a monthly basis, but as a whole, it's much, it's half of that.
And I, you know, and I remind people in my discussions a lot, and I'm just, for a few minutes here, let me say this, that there's a lot of people that don't understand what a budget is, imagine that. I'm not saying I'm an expert, but the point is, is very conservative budget with respect to that sales tax forecast, and we hope we're wrong, we hope it's up. And then that's where that excess revenue comes in, but for now, we cannot show certain projects because there's not a matching revenue. We have to have that planned, so. And it goes to everything in this budget, and it's frustrating. I would love to argue with Gilbert about, oh no, all you gotta do is, is change that forecast slightly, and suddenly there's a higher number there, but that's not reality, and that's what we do. So, anyway, I will stop on that.
I just need some clarification because I'm sure what you said was accurate, but I missed something.
On which?
If, if the sales tax is going, is down by 22% each month, then how over a year is that only 8% or 9%? You must, you're comparing two different things.
Now, in my mind, the way you think, it's kinda weird, I know. I'm visualizing the 2016 year. Half, about eight, eight months of that, we didn't have, we're in pretty, in good shape. The last three, four months, it started hitting a 22, 23% decline. So, but the overall for the 2016 projected, it's gonna be down by 9%. Okay? So, from an 18 million dollars, it's gonna be close to 16.4. That's what I had projected.
And what percent are you projecting for 2017?
2017, it's gonna be a little less. I got, 'cause, 'cause I'm projecting right now to come in at 16.4. For 2017, I got 16.2. So, it's down, depends when you ask me, what are you comparing? Are you comparing it from 18, from a budget year to, to a budget year, it'd be a different rate, of course, but if you're asking me from a projected to a next year's budget, it's only, it's down slightly from the projected 16.4 that I'm projecting to come in at 2016 year. For 2017 year, I'm projecting to come in at 16.2. Earlier, I was comparing the 18 million dollars, which that's the original budget we started with. That's, it can get confusing, what numbers we dealing with and from what part of the budget. So, my apologies on that. One good example that Paul brought up, but it can, you know, you can change one year and change the rest of the year. Sales tax will be affected down the road, 'cause that's a multiple collection, and we have all these CIPs after the 17. Those years, 18, 19, 20, has to come back to the table, reshuffle, and see how we're gonna do there. One of the reasons why 17's okay, we have pretty solid reserves in sales tax corporation. So, I'm not taking the same hit at the same large, because in sales tax, my, sales tax proceeds about eight, nine million dollars. Over there, I'm projecting for next year about eight-something, so it's a different ratio. So, I, when I have a $4 million reserve, I can absorb that easier and still do the project in 17, but what's gonna affect is 18, 19, 20. 'Cause you do, you, 'cause I was using that to cover these other projects. That's why I, 17's okay. Whatever project y'all do, that's up to y'all, but the money's there.
I have a couple other questions regarding the, you know, the pay and the first responders and all that. I mean, I know all of us want us to do the best we can with all of our employees, they're all valuable. And I, I have a question, the, where are we with respect to market rates? I heard that term tonight, for officers. Do y'all have that? If not, we can bring that back next time, maybe?
I think that's the thing to do, is.
Next time, okay. I'm just curious where we are with respect to the market out there. And I, how many, and you may know this, Charmel, the, 'cause you were in Human Resources for a long time prior, how many years have we not been able to afford any raises? Very few, right?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, I'm gonna look at Cheryl. In the 25 years or 26 years, I think we've only not done pay raises in two years, and that's counting in the 17 year. Right? So, really, prior to 17, it's only been one other time that we did not do pay raises.
Think that was in 11, or?
I think it was in nine or 10 when we had the recession. Do you remember Cheryl, which year we didn't do it? Not to do, but anyway, yeah.
That's, that's good enough, that's a good enough, because I was, obviously, I was on council with that. That was a difficult, it was worse than this budget, it was a difficult year. So, just those two in your memory. Counsel? Nothing, we have a motion and second, and again, we'll have, how many more public readings, two?
We've got two.
Two votes, two more votes.
Got two votes, the, September the 6th, and then September the 13th are the budget votes.
The 6th to 8th, well, every, every one, and you, you still can have a.
Hearing, but actual formal votes on the budget, I think, are the 6th and the 13th, right?
We got a six, a vote on, on, on September 6th, and on the 8th, we have a vote on the tax.
But not on the budget.
Not on the budget tax rate?
Tax rate on the 8th, the budget's 13th.
And the 13th, final vote for everything.
For the budget.
And just real, one, one quick question, and Lynn, don't get up, maybe I'll answer this. This budget, with respect to the, your 10-year plan to get streets, and it's a 10-year plan, correct? You have to kinda get everything on a schedule. Are we still accomplishing that here? Are we still gonna be okay on that? Is that a fair question?
We're doing, Lynn's gonna have to get up, we're doing the Seal Code work. It's some of the rebuild work that we're not being able to do in 17, but we are doing the maintenance work that we had set out to do.
And that was the 10-year plan.
That's exactly right.
So, we're, we're gonna be okay?
That's right, with regard to maintenance, we're spot-on right now, still. Some of the reconstruction was dependent upon bond sales, and we've had to defer that now.
Okay.
My read was there's like 2 million budgeted for Seal coding, is that right?
About 2 million.
Lower 2 million.
2 million.
And I know you're gonna get up, I'm sorry.
Do we have a meeting on August the 30th?
Yes, sir, we do. There are public hearings on the 30th, they're both hearings for both, so there's no votes.
Okay. Sorry, Lynn, I know you're gonna get up and talk to us again in a minute. Okay, I will stop. Mr. Hoppaskin, are you?
Well, traditionally, in any time there's a tight budget year, and this clearly identifies as a tight budget year, it is common for many communities cut back on maintenance. Now, cutting back on projects, you have no choice, but if you cut back on maintenance, it can sure multiply dramatically, very quickly. So, I'm pleased that we're not cutting back on maintenance. Very positive thing for us to be doing.
I'll express what I expressed to Charmel the other day. I said, I like this budget. Hard cuts, but there's still a lot of work being done. Next fiscal year, certainly appreciate staff, all the work they've done and gonna be doing next year.
Okay, council seeing no further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay. Passes on the first reading, we have two more readings, as was mentioned. No consent agenda and one resolution.
The one resolution is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment to a real estate sales contract for the sale of real property located on Business 59, Chukala and Al Katab Investments Incorporated, to reduce the sales price to $550,000, allow the city the option of retaining 3.57 acres within the flood zone, and declaring an effective date.
Make a motion to approve.
Hold a second, Ted.
Motion and second. Any questions on this? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay. Item passes, so now city manager report.
I know Springwood has been one of the subdivisions that has come up frequently, so Lynn's just gonna do an update on the 2015 residential street project so we can brief you on Springwood.
Certainly. This would be the 2015 reclaimed seal project, which is here again, a maintenance project. It included Meadow Creek subdivision, which we've talked about extensively, but I'm happy to report Meadow Creek subdivision is 100% complete. We are gonna sweep it one more time. It's been swept after, after the roadwork was done, it's been swept once. We're gonna come back in and sweep it again, probably mid-September. From there, the contractor moved into the Hamlet subdivision and is, has been working there. We're probably 70% complete with Hamlet right now. There's a, a portion of London Dairy and a portion of Camelot that there, that still has to be done. We anticipate they will be done there by mid-September. And the next subdivision is Eagle Creek. We've gone out in advance of doing these, moving into another subdivision and done some potholing, or basically digging holes in the street to observe and take samples of the base that underlies the roadway there. We've done that in Eagle Creek, and what we've seen there in our testing confirms that it is a good subdivision, a good candidate for this process, this rehab, this reclaim seal process, and so we're moving into there. The other subdivision that's included in this project is Springwood. With the exception of Springwood Drive, if you remember, a couple of years ago, we reconstructed Springwood in its entirety, but the remainder of the subdivision, we did not do. And so, we had it based on 2014 street inventories. At, at that time, that street was in excess of 86, so it was right on the edge of being a good candidate for reclaimed seal. We included it in this project. We've recently gone out there and potholed in, in that subdivision too, in advance of this work, and what we found there makes us believe that that is not, not any longer a good candidate for this process. We've sent, while we were doing the potholding, our city engineer, Ken Gill, as well as Randy Beena with Civil Corps, went out, observed the base within those potholes, took some samples, had some tests ran on it. Because of the leaving and pushing that we're seeing in that neighborhood, the insufficient amounts of base that we found when we potholed, and the condition of that base, we, our recommendation is that we remove that subdivision. uh, we, our recommendation is that we remove that subdivision from the scope of work of this project, and we bring forward a deductive change order. We anticipate that will reduce the project amount by about three-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars. And then that we, as city manager said earlier, we're going to be looking at uh C I P again in, in, soon after the first, the calendar year. Springwood would go back into the mix with all the other streets that need to be reconstructed for consideration and prioritization in that list. But we believe at this point that it has declined to the point where it is a candidate for complete reconstruction at some point, when, whenever funding becomes available to do so. That then would, uh, so once we finished Eagle Creek, then all that would remain in this project would be uh seal coating of one, one street in the park that's F B Lowery that runs back into Grover's Bend. It's not a reclaimed process, it's just a double seal coat. Uh, and so we anticipate by the end of October to be completely through with this project as it stands now.
Lynn, uh, one of the things about Springwood, you'll have to do some point repairs in there, probably in a few areas.
And there's probably need to be extensive point repairs done there. I mean, it's, it's, it's experiencing some, quite a few failures, yes.
But you'll do that as.
We will have to, yes.
Yes, yeah. So for those residents in there that are wondering that. So one of the things that we did, uh, this go around with Hamlet and Eagle Creek, I assume Eagle Creek. But uh Lynn's department sent out a letter to each of the residents in that subdivision explaining to them the process. Uh, so hopefully, you know, uh, got out ahead of any communication issues versus just waiting on the contractor to do that. And uh, so gave them a phone number to call, but extensively explained the process for their subdivision.
George, how old are those streets in Springwood? One of the newer neighborhoods out there.
You know, the answer, it was built in several phases. You know the dates?
Five, and then three, back, that was done in ninety-three, ninety-four. And then uh, section on the left-hand side as you go in was probably done in ninety-five, ninety-six. And then the section on the right was probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine. It was, there, there were several different phases in that neighborhood.
But even at that time, it was being built to the standards we have had on the books, so.
Glad we increased the standards.
That's exactly right.
The standards were fairly weak at that time.
I, I see the evidence.
They're gonna, the, when you go back and sweep?
Yes.
Uh, I guess the Hamlet?
Meadow Creek.
Meadow Creek, excuse me, uh, the on-street parking is a problem?
We note, we notify in advance of the sweeping.
How, how are you, is it mail? Are y'all doing another mail?
We do it by passing outdoor flyers. The contractor actually does that.
Helps, I guess, people cooperate. That's good.
It's good. It worked well.
The uh, the point repairs that the city manager mentioned in Springwood, you know, Councilman Bocknight and I drove all of, what, Woodway and the other one?
Riddle Ridge and Saddle Brook.
Yes.
North Ridge.
Anywhere there's a lateral pressure movement, which I know you guys know, there's a pushing effect on a curve is where the problems are. And so we probably need to, I don't know if you communicated any of those point repairs, but I think that would help. I'll try to get a list or something.
We have done quite a few point repairs in Woodway and some in Riddle Ridge. We have several more lined up, especially in Saddle Brook right now. We anticipate that we will continue to do quite a bit of point repair in there in order to try to, to keep those streets operable.
Good. Questions? Slow and steady.
Thank you.
Thank you. So nothing else? City manager reports. Do we have any further business? Seeing none, uh, we're adjourned. Thank you.
This is the agenda for the thirty.